This conference will now be recorded.
To America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Ward, would you do your indication, please?
Our most gracious heaven and father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. We just want to say thank you for your many blessings. You have bestowed upon each and every one of us. We pray in our Father, we go into this meeting, Lord, give us the knowledge, the wisdom and understanding we need to have, Lord, to conduct our businesses for all the citizens of this great community that we live in. Thank you for what you've done, what you're going to do for us, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
And we'll just have a long silence for those who passed away and everything. Thank you. Please be seated. Cut your phones off or turn the ringers down. I'm greatly appreciative. This time, I'll ask anybody on board, if you have a conflict of interest with any of the subjects of today's agenda, please let us know that. If not, we'll move right along. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as it is.
Move to adopt.
Okay, second.
Mayor, I would like to add something to the...
Okay, what would you like to say?
Closed session personnel.
Okay, I've already done that.
All right, thank you.
And anything, anybody else wants to add, if not? In all favor? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. No comment. Anybody sign up to speak? Planning Board, I see Mr. King is here. Mike, step up to the podium.
Okay, as you're probably aware, we didn't have a meeting in July, but tomorrow, we're meeting a pretty healthy agenda. We're going to be dealing with the stormwater, which has been work in progress since April for the planning board. And I think we're getting pretty close to being able to have something presented to this board. The old ordinance was very vague and pretty much unenforceable, and I think we've got something that will make it clear, definitive, and allow us to enforce stormwater regulations in the town when we get this thing through. But we're still not done yet. We're approaching the finish line, hopefully. Also, we're going to work, discuss these political signs. Political signs have always been, on previous boards that I sat on, a controversial issue. The boards, boards of commissioners, just were ill over those because of the proliferation of these signs out here. It's like somebody will put a sign up, and then the next day, somebody will go put their sign right in front of that sign, so nobody can see it. So we currently have, in our town, three roads that are state roads and the rest are town roads. So we have, right now, we're enforcing two different ordinances, and this is, this is a chance to get all under one ordinance. The thing I don't like about it is the state, state rules are more lenient than our town rules, but that's just something we're going to have to deal with. In September, our meeting, we're going to deal with right-of-way management. And in particular, in the right-of-way, we've got a problem with these. The only thing that's allowed in the right-of-way by the citizenry without a permit is a mailbox. But some of these mailboxes are concrete and brick things, and they set the, the federal government sets where the mailbox has to be relative to the pavement. And so we've got these concrete things right up close to the edge of the pavement, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. And that is unaddressed in our ordinance, so we're going to be discussing that. Also, we're going to be discussing Senate Bill 374, which is the Affordable Housing Act. And that, essentially, what it does is it could affect this town's ordinance of single residents per lot. They talk about something that's always been wanted around here, but never been allowed is garage apartments or mother-in-law apartments and those type things in the single-family development. And that's in the Senate right now. I don't know the exact details of where it is right now, but that's something, we're not going to take any action or any recommendations, but I want to see where our board is as a planning board with regard to that. And the other one is House Bill 475, which deals with elimination of ETJs. You know, ETJs are properties with, in a town that are governed by our ordinances and building regulations. They're not taxed, but basically, it's been like that, and I don't know what the reason for doing away with them are, but that's House Bill 475, that's in our legislature right now. Finally, next meeting, we're going to rotate different planning board members to give this report to the board, to give them some exposure to the town and get them to be a little bit more involved in what goes on in this town. And that'll just be an ongoing thing. We'll rotate it. We'll put a schedule, and we'll announce that to Heather, so that she can put on the agenda who will be giving the presentation. That's all I have, unless there's some questions?
Thank you, Mike. Next up is the consent agenda. A motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, next up is resolution authorize a construction contract for Bog Sound Drive drainage improvements.
Mayor Baker, Commissioners, I'm happy to present the resolution for your consideration tonight. It would authorize a contract in the amount of $156,185 with Sunland Builders, local firm just down Highway 24, and is for the construction of drainage improvements in the 200 block of Bog Sound Drive. For the benefit of the audience, it's generally the area here outlined in yellow. The red represents some of the features that feed into or out of the area that we're talking about improving the drainage system. But it's essentially between Edgewater and Park, generally speaking, in the 200 block. The project includes several improvements aimed at addressing significant flooding, mostly during hurricane-type rainfall events. Those of you who were here after Florence know that this area experienced significant flooding at that time, and in fact, the road was washed out under Bog Sound Drive near the existing headwaters of the canal in that area, as well as just creating problems for the residents further down in the 200 block. I've got a blown-up version of the plans here. I've got it in two different sections here, just to be able to show you. This is where the cursor is, is headed toward Bog Sound, toward Edgewater Drive, is basically down about where the arrow is right now. We've got a system of six different infiltration bioswales, and these are the large features that you see here. These are the first three, as you move from south to north. The rest of the image is, right here, you can see the additional infiltration bioswales, grand total of six of them. There are a total of six driveway culverts in this area, some of which are collapsed and not functioning correctly, some of which are undersized. We would be replacing those driveway culverts and creating a better, more efficient, effective conveyance system along the public right-of-way on the east side of Bog Sound Drive, and we would also create additional storage capacity here as well. When you get up to the road crossing at the headwaters of the canal, which is basically this area right here, and it kind of loops out back down to Bog Sound in this area, where it was washed out in one of the previous storms, there is currently a 24-inch pipe under Bog Sound Drive in this area. The proposal is to replace that pipe with two 30-inch pipes underneath the road. And so we'll more than double the capacity for the volume of water flowing through there. There's a significant ditch that is located right here where the cursor is. It comes down and makes a hard 90, goes back up toward Highway 24, drains a pretty significant area between Lejeune Road and Bog Sound Drive, all the way back up to Highway 24. So a lot of stormwater flowing down through here. This pipe would be more than doubled in capacity. There's also the construction of concrete headwalls on both sides of this, really just to strengthen that feature for the most significant rainfall events, and hopefully minimize the potential for sediment to flow into the canal here. Some of you may know that the town did some dredging in this part of the canal in the last year or two because of sediment that accumulated there. We think that the headwalls will help minimize that in the future. So you've really got just a comprehensive improvement to the drainage system in this area. These improvements were designed by a firm called RKNK Engineers out of Raleigh, completed this work. We went out for informal bids. We sent a copy of the bid package to 11 contractors in our area. We received three bids back. Sunland Builders is the low bidder. The amount of the base bid was 164,605, and that was the low bid by a considerable amount. The other two bids were from Thomas Simpson Construction in Morehead City and M&amp;W Land Improvement in Jacksonville. Those ranged anywhere from 210,000 to 372,000. So the low bid was 164,605 with Sunland. That is just significantly higher than the engineer's opinion of probable cost. He had estimated a cost of about $139,000 for this project, so not too far off of his estimate of the cost for this project. And I think it's a fair bid that we received for the work and the improvements in this area. In an effort to reduce the cost somewhat, I met with the contractor after we opened the bids, was able to reduce it by about $8,000 down to the 156,185 that's recommended for your consideration tonight. There is money available for this project in the Stormwater Capital Project Ordinance that the board has approved and is being used to fund the various improvements at Sutton Drive and Arden Oaks and some of the other locations in town. Funding is available in that Capital Project Ordinance. This particular project is being funded by a grant from the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management. We have a grant for $200,000 that was initially awarded for design work at several different locations. As it stands right now, the grant funds would be used to pay for the construction of this project and almost all the design work associated with this project. The design contract was right around $48,000, so we've got 156,000 here. Grant funds will cover almost everything. The balance will be covered with your American Rescue Plan Act funds that we set aside in the Stormwater Capital Project Ordinance. So I'm happy to be presenting it for your consideration tonight. Do believe it will be a helpful improvement for the residents in this area and hopefully prevent the kinds of issues that the area experienced in previous storms. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Any questions for Frank?
Frank, once this is approved, if it's approved, what's the timeframe where they commence work and how long is it going to take to do the job?
Yeah, we would expect that they would start work probably after the Labor Day holiday. It's probably a five- or six-week job. We would expect them to finish up sometime in early October, obviously weather permitting and, you know, whatever other issues come up. But I think that's a reasonable timeframe, certainly well before the December 31st grant deadline that we have. One thing that the board should note and the public should note is that we will need to close Bog Sound Drive right at the crossing, or the culverts underneath of the street at that location. Will not impact anybody's ability to get to their homes. The folks that live on the south side of that crossing are just going to have to use one of the other streets in the neighborhood to loop around and come back up, and we'll certainly communicate that as well as we can with the residents out there.
I think also, Frank, that you may want to reach out to the construction, construction company and inform them about the main water line that runs parallel with the road. Last time, when it washed out, was the issue with the water company. I would probably, if I suggest that you reach out to Lisa Smith and let her know, we're going to do this again, so she can get her people ready?
Yeah, we will absolutely do that.
Okay. And I just want to briefly, if you will, and this, this to me has a lot to do with this project, but it's not included in the project, if you would just inform the public that's here tonight what the town's intentions are of maintaining or cleaning out that ditch between the two residents on Park Street that actually caused the culvert to fail the first time during Hurricane Florence, what the plan is for the town?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So there's, as depicted in red on the aerial photo map right here, we need to secure at least one easement on the discharge side of the pipe going under the road, and we're working with the property owner on that right now, and the town attorney's drafting that easement. I'm not sure if we need a second one there. If we need that, we'll secure that. I don't expect to have difficulty securing those easements. All of the work that we're doing is within the street right-of-way. It's just that the effluent flows across private property on the west side of the street in that area. The part that you're talking about, if you see the arrows that I have indicated here, we're also working to secure easements from a total of four property owners. Basically, the ditch makes, takes an L shape here from Park down and then turns over toward Bog Sound Drive. That's a historical ditch that's extremely important to the whole drainage system in this area. We technically don't have the right to maintain that. All of the property owners in that area would be very pleased for the town to maintain that. They're all very supportive. I've talked to them. The town attorney's drafting easements to go to those property owners to give us the perpetual right to clean out the ditch in that area, and I hope that we'll be able to do that on a regular basis going forward with our public work staff. In the short term, I'm working with Carteret County to essentially bring in one of their contractors to clean out this entire ditch feature, all the way beyond what you see on the image here, up closer to Highway 24, the ditch that runs between Bog Sound Drive and Lejeune in the red line here, clean all of that out, including the L-shaped feature here that you're referencing, Commissioner Martin. And so I was supposed to meet with their contractor in the next week or two. I got a phone call today that suggested maybe they're here now, so maybe it's moving quicker than I thought, but absolutely need to make sure that we're maintaining this feature in the future. It's got a lot of vegetation growing up in it right now, as you know, but it's really critical for this whole area of the town. And so not technically a part of the contract here tonight, but we're working on that, and we need to commit to maintaining it in the future.
Thanks, Frank. Any other questions, comments? Have a motion?
I'd like to motion we approve the resolution.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is presentation of the 2023 Fall Festival.
Gosh, it's hard to believe, but we're about a little less than three months away from the Fall Festival right now. Saturday, November the 4th, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so I hope folks will come out and enjoy, hopefully, a beautiful day with their neighbors and guests in Cape Carteret. I wanted to just take a few minutes and update the board on where we're at with the festival. As per your direction, we're working to make this the town's signature special event each year, and so we've invested a little more effort into enhancing the event. And so what I've got on the screen and is included in the board's packet is just the layout for this year's event. Again, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This area in green is the existing stage, and so we have three musical performances lined up, starting at 11:30. We also have another performance at 1:30, and finally, another performance at 3:30. We have Justin Castellano, Hank Party Trio, and the 42 Band headliner, coming on at 3:30, probably until the festival ends that afternoon. First, we used to have all of those participating and extending the length of the show. One of the key things that we're, one of the key new things we're doing this year is in this area in... Red on the map, we actually have a beer tent lined up. We're very pleased to have Whiskey Bravo, a local Cape Carteret restaurant, running that, manning that, making beer available to sale. They will be handling all aspects of that, including cutting people off when they need to be cut off, making sure people are of age, keep in order. Obviously, we'll have the police department at the entire event, and they'll assist as necessary, but they've done this at other events. They're reputable restaurateurs in our area. I'm sure they'll do a great job, and really pleased to offer that for folks. The area of Dolphin Street in yellow is the food truck area, and you'll note that that's a little bit different than what we've done in the past. In the past, we had some out on Highway 24 in front of the police station. One of the things that we're trying to do with this plan is keep the entire festival within one line of sight, so that you can kind of see everything that's going on as opposed to having it snake around, and we'll be trying to concentrate the food trucks more down in this area here, adjacent to Community Park and adjacent to the stage. But all the food trucks will be lined up in this area here. Thanks to Ms. Paxton-Holtz, we've secured the use of a vacant lot right here in purple. This will be the designated vendor area, so really appreciate that offer, and just makes the entire site flow a little better and be more comfortable. So all the vendors and so forth in this area. We've got a trackless train ride lined up for kids coming, I believe, out of Greensboro or somewhere in that area. We think that'll be a nice attraction for kids. We're bringing back the BMX exhibition that was here last year that was really well-received and really pretty entertaining. And then finally, in the blue area, we've got a bouncy house and a bouncy slide lined up here, and we've got a contractor lined up that's bringing their own staffing, their own liability insurance, and we'll be manning that so that we have some better offerings for children at this year's event. We've got Dolphin Street closed off right behind the Police Department Court Life Building down here behind Community Park. We're closing off Manatee. Basically, it's kind of at an angle so that people can still get out of the rear entrance and exit of McDonald's in this area here, so the trackless train can exit and head down Manatee Street as well. So trying as best we can to improve the event. We have a committee that's been working with us and really appreciate their contributions. We've talked about a lot of these issues with that group. We actually explored a couple of different locations. We looked at trying to do it at Carteret Crossing Shopping Center. We looked at trying to do it at the vacant lot near Ribeyes. We also actually looked at a vacant parcel near the Aquatic Center. For various reasons, none of those were quite perfect for what we were hoping to do, and so we wound up back here at the Town Hall facility. And like I said, one of the key conclusions of the committee was to keep everything all in one area, all in a continuous line of sight. So I think this plan will achieve that. We've got a total budget for this year's event of $20,000. That relies on $10,000 in sponsorships and $10,000 from the town. We are still seeking and welcome sponsorships, so if anybody's out there in the audience or listening, we certainly would love to talk to you going forward. I'm really pleased to announce that we've all secured a total of $7,000 in hand. We've got another commitment for $500, and we also feel pretty confident we're going to get to the 10,000 figure, but still need to work a little harder on that. I want to especially thank Sally Said So, professional dog training, stepped up to the plate with a $5,000 sponsorship for this event, so very much appreciate their assistance with that. Like I said, we've still got others we're reaching out to. There are folks in the audience or who are listening that would be interested. We really need to line those up by the end of August, so we can get their names on the T-shirts and give them the proper, proper thank you for their contribution. So in terms of the expense side, we're going to come in below the 20,000 figure. I'm confident in that. Obviously, we're going to be as judicious as we can be with the expenses. I do want to make sure that we don't expose ourselves to any unnecessary liability, so the town has general liability insurance through the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and that basically covers everything that we do. In addition to that, we've got insurance for Whiskey Bravos. We've got insurance for the bouncy house and the trackless train and all those folks. And then we're actually going to purchase one-day special event policies for this, just to make sure that we're completely covered. Obviously, safety is the key consideration. Don't want anybody getting hurt in any way, and certainly want to protect the town in any way that we can going forward. So I want to thank Barbara Owens in particular for her work on the Fall Festival. She's been great at putting, pulling this together, and now, of course, she's wearing another hat, a bigger hat than just the festival. So a little bit of a strain, but she's handling things well, and I appreciate her help with all of this. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I wanted to share that with you. Hopefully, you're as excited as we are about it, and I welcome any comments or suggestions or ideas that you have, and going forward, we'll just continually try to improve it in the future.
All right, no comments or questions about that, and we'll move on to the discussion of development of Town Center zoning district.
I'm really happy to start this conversation with the Board of Commissioners and hopefully with the planning board and the community at large and the property owners going forward. What you see on the screen right now is one of the pictures that was included in the town's comprehensive land use plan that was adopted by the board last October. It includes, probably the key element of that plan is the creation of a town center area in Cape Carteret, and it's generally envisioned as the area within the interior of the triangle, 58 Taylor Notion, Highway 24. And essentially, what the plan says, based on all of the public input and obviously the review by the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, is we want to create basically a center in the middle of the town where there's a combination of mixed uses, some multifamily housing, some vibrant public spaces, to create a distinct sense of place, a really neat destination in Cape Carteret for people to enjoy themselves. And a key component of that is mixed-use buildings. And so this is one of the graphics that was included in the land use plan, and essentially, you can see commercial businesses on the ground floor, you can see apartments or condominiums on the upper floors, then you see public squares and wider sidewalks and just places where people can hang out. And so that's probably the best illustration that's in the land use plan. Couple of other things, you know, again, showing the mixed-use buildings generally closer to the street, generally with parking in the rear and on the sides. We've got also a mixture of housing, so there could be some single-family homes in that area, more of like that village feel to it, more of like a Charleston-style, houses that are a little closer to the street, a little closer together. That was an element that was included in the plan as well. And so you see some of, more of the photos that were included in there, kind of the typical southern-style homes. You get into some of the other graphics that are in there, more of the mixed use, where you've got commercial business on the ground floor, you've got apartments or condos upstairs. And what you notice about, just about all these pictures, is the buildings are closer together and closer to the street, and so that's the basic concept. So I have gone back and researched the land use plan, what the vision was that was outlined in there, and I've tried to craft some development regulations that ultimately would be adopted by the Board of Commissioners and included in our Unified Development Ordinance to basically create the framework for this kind of development to happen in this town center area. So what I've done for you tonight is I've put together a preliminary draft ordinance, and I want to stress to you and to everyone who's here that it is very much a preliminary draft. My intention, this is a very new concept for Cape Carteret and relatively new for lots of communities for that matter, but my intention tonight is to share the basic framework with you, what I'm thinking, how I've drafted it. Not looking for you to get into the details or the weeds, so to speak, but just to give me your general feedback on, yes, I think this is a good direction to go, proceed, keep going, if that's in fact the direction, the feedback that you provide tonight. My intent is to work closely with the affected property owners, take these recommendations, these ideas, these concepts to the planning board, have a robust discussion with the planning board, have them take these regulations and adjust them in whatever way they believe is best for Cape Carteret, ideally factoring in the property owners' input and concerns and also the general public's concerns, but ultimately, at the end of the day, creating a set of regulations that really incentivize this kind of development, which is what our community has said it would like to see. So my general philosophy toward the regulation of new development in the community is the community should figure out, through its elected officials ultimately, the community should figure out what it wants to see, what it wants to accomplish in there, with a lot of public input, with a lot of input from people like staff and planning board members and so forth. The community needs to figure out what it wants to see in its community, and then we need to craft the development regulations so that we incentivize it, so that we create the opportunities for people to want to create this kind of environment in Cape Carteret. Set up the regulations to promote creativity, to promote flexibility, honestly, to promote lucrative business opportunities. That's what makes any community successful, is when the businesses and the development in the community does well and people make money. So I want to set up a system, a scheme, where people can create what this community wants to see in a way that's good for the community, good for the landowner, good for the developer, good for the public. And again, ultimately, going back to the land use plan, creates that distinct sense of place in Cape Carteret, where people kind of know, yeah, that's a cool place, I want to hang out there. And you, you've all been to those kind of places, you've all got... So in order to accomplish that, the concept that I'm putting forth for you tonight and ultimately, hopefully, for the Planning Board is to create a new town center zoning district. And so essentially, in my mind, and this is subject to discussion with property owners and with the Planning Board and ultimately, all of you, essentially, the area in blue, I would envision all of these properties would be rezoned to this new town center zoning district. And again, you may adjust that. You may make that a little smaller, you may make that a little bit bigger, but that's the basic concept that I'm putting forth right now. Currently, these properties are zoned B20, which is the red, R20, which is the blue, and R30, which is the yellow. So you basically have three zoning districts in there. This is where the vast majority of the large vacant parcels are in Cape Carteret. Whatever new development of any scale happens here, it's going to be in this area going forward. And so my proposal would be to rezone all of these parcels to this new town center zoning district and essentially apply the regulations that I've outlined in the written materials for you. And I'm not going to go through each one of these because we'll hopefully do that in great detail with the Planning Board going forward. But essentially, I'm trying to incentivize the type of development that I showed you in those pictures, trying to make it worthwhile, honestly, trying to make it so that the landowner or the developer says, gosh, this is a no-brainer. This is, this really makes sense, and I can make some money at this, and I can help create a better community in Cape Carteret. So essentially, what this new zoning district does, the key points, it essentially allows all of the same uses that people currently have. So if someone wants to build a single-family home in any of those parcels zoned R20, R30, or really any of the parcels within the area bounded by the dark blue, they could do that. They could follow the existing rules that we have for R20 or R30 and build 20,000 square-foot lots, single-family homes, all the same setbacks and so forth. If someone wants to build traditional commercial, they want to build a new shopping center, Starbucks in or Wells Fargo or something like that, they can do. The proposal here is not to take any opportunities that currently exist away from anyone. In addition to all of that, the proposal is to allow mixed-use development in this entire new zone. Basically, building or developments that have a mixture of commercial and residential uses. And it allows residential multifamily units up to eight units per acre. So for example, you could have a building that has a Starbucks or a pizza place or whatever on the ground floor, and you could have apartments or condominiums above it, up to eight units per acre. And so that's a significant increase in the density by Cape Carteret standards. I would submit to you by many community standards, I'd still consider that to be a medium density, not high density by any means relative to lots of other communities. But this ordinance would allow people to do that mixed-use development, to create the buildings you saw in those pictures in the land use plan. It also allows multifamily housing. So for example, if someone wanted to build an apartment complex or they wanted to build condos, they could do that, up to the eight units per acre. And then finally, it also creates a classification that's called Village Single Family Residential. And essentially, it's to create those single-family homes that I showed you in the pictures, that Charleston-style, and allow up to six units per acre. So smaller lots, you know, roughly, they're going to wind up being in the 7,000 square-foot range, and you could do six of them. Whereas under our current zoning districts, for example, R30, you can pretty much get two units per acre, or 22 units per acre. So it basically pushes everything together. A key element of this is that it would have setbacks that are greatly reduced. So it's a minimum setback of five feet from the street as opposed to 35 or 40 in your traditional residential zones, and a maximum setback of 10 feet to keep those structures, whether it's a single-family home or whether it's a mixed-use building or a multifamily building, keep them all up to the street. A specific requirement that the parking be in the rear or on the side, a specific requirement that the streets have curb and gutter and have sidewalks, which the town already requires the sidewalks anyway, so that's not a new element. But the fact that we'd require the curb and gutter, the fact that we would allow the on-street parking to count towards some of the parking requirements for this, again, to kind of create that kind of downtown, town center, traditional village-type feel, those are some of the regulations that are included in here, again, to incentivize it. So that ideally, the property owner or the developer would say, yeah, this is really cool, this is really neat, I can do a good project here, and it'll be economically viable, and we can go forward with this. And again, not taking anything away, any options away, people can still do the traditional things if they wanted to. So that's essentially the way that it's structured. One other thing that I wanted to point out is if you look at the map on the screen, you'll see where the Arden Oaks subdivision is, which is basically right in here. That is the only traditional single-family neighborhood that would be affected by any of this development. And so I wouldn't want anything that we do in this new zone to harm that neighborhood. So for example, one of the provisions in here says that there'd be a much larger buffer. I suggested maybe 50 feet adjacent to Arden Oaks because I want to make sure that we're protecting the existing residential, traditional, single-family residential neighborhoods in that area. So that's another key element, too, to structure this in a way that only good things can come out of this for the community, for the landowners, for the neighbors. As part of this, I would imagine the developers would be laying out new streets, dedicating them to the town for public use. I would envision primarily public streets in this area because that's the whole concept of the town center with the sidewalks, ideally with some sort of maybe town square or town hall facility or something in the future there. But you'd have a new street network through here that would be dedicated to the town. Now, you may still have some private streets in there, depending on specific residential developments, but the intent is to create that public space that was outlined in the land use plan, the vision that the community said it wanted in this area here. So I wanted to just share all that with you because I wanted to start this conversation. This would be a really significant undertaking for the town of Cape Carteret. If the board is generally comfortable with the concept here, I will proceed and work with the Planning Board and the property owners and come back to you probably sometime after the first of the year to try to make this a reality and create the framework for this type of development to happen in the future. Everything that I just quoted you in terms of setbacks or densities or street whiz or anything like that, those are my thoughts, right? I'm sure that when everyone else has a chance to discuss this and offer comments, there'll be some really good suggestions, there'll be some other concerns not yet identified. I shared those with you so that I could give you a sense of the general thought process that I'm pursuing here and the general framework, so that hopefully, we can come up with something. In the end, maybe the Planning Board, maybe the Board of Commissioners says, you know, I think eight units per acre is too much, maybe it should be seven or six. Or maybe they say, hey, you probably should allow 10, you know. So I think there's those opportunities for discussion going forward. But I wanted to clearly convey to you, to the public, to the property owners, what the general thought process is. So I will stop there and happy to answer any questions you may have. Again, I think, you know, what I'm seeking from the board is just your general feedback from this. Am I on the right path, or should I maybe stop and regroup?
I seem to think that this is a good start. I think you're kind of on the right path. You know, we, we talked about this. I don't think you were here yet. We, we talked about this land use plan and we, you know, put it in motion and everything, and we knew that it would be somewhat tough to do, and I think it's still tough to do. But I think this is how you chip away at it. And I think there's a balance that can be met between the landowner and what the land use plan says. And so I think this is the beginnings of striking that balance. So I think, I think this is a great start.
Thank you.
I agree. It's a long, it would be a long way to come and a lot, a lot to look at going forward, but you have to start with a vision. And we, we kind of started with that vision, actually, a couple of years ago, we started talking about it. I'm all in favor of just the way you're going with this and looking forward and see where we could go with it. I think, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Cameron and Don said already. This is a good, good start for the town to look at and have a future with our town. So where is it going to go? See, this is a good way we can look at it. I know that sewer is going to be a big, a big part of that conversation come, moving forward as well. But, you know, we have to have, we have to start somewhere. I think this is where we're at. I think we've hard worked at this point.
Yeah, I think that's a point worth expanding on a little bit for everyone else, is that sewer is certainly going to be a limiting factor, right? I mean, but the good news is, is we've got generally sandy soils. I feel like eight units per acre or something in that range is probably achievable, given the soils that we have. But in the end, those kinds of restrictions and any camera restrictions or stormwater requirements that come into play, a lot of this new development's going to be subject to state stormwater rules. Those are all going to impact how a particular project lays out and whether it's viable or not. But I think this at least sets the basic framework going forward, and then there'll be those other things. But I'm sure we'll get into a lot of conversations about those things.
We got, if we're going to have this, we've got to have a framework. I just want to caution the Planning Board and anybody else that's working on this to not get too prescriptive and to not get out of our lane. There are plenty of state regulations on a lot of these things that we don't have any control over, and there's no need for us to try to get into the minutia that is already going to be taken care of by state stormwater rules and some other things. So I just want to be, I want to caution everybody that's going to be involved with this. Please don't get so prescriptive or so tied to an idea that when a landowner has a creative idea that we don't find a way to make it work for them. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are going to be doing this, them and the developers.
And that's absolutely the intent behind this, is to give them that opportunity to be creative and be flexible if it's a good project. Absolutely.
And that's been my main interest from the start with the land use plan. As you know, it, the vote was three to two, three in favor of adopting, two against. Charlie and I were the two against. It's been my main interest from, from the get-go is property owner rights. So I'm glad you explained that part, Frank. I'm all for this, but like, I would like feedback from the property owners as soon as you can get it. That's, that's my main interest in all of this.
Absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, regardless of what we do here, whether it looks exactly like I just described or something different, we need to have buy-in from the property owners and make sure it's an achievable project for them.
It's like, like Charlie mentioned, at the end of the day, it's, it's their, you know, I don't want to waste a whole lot of time if they're not interested in it.
Absolutely.
But it's good, good thought process. I like the way you're, you're going forward with it. If you could, just get back with us as soon as you can on the...
Absolutely.
So you have a consensus, sir?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your willingness to let us go to the next step in this. And like I said, I expect it will take at least a few months at the Planning Board. Maybe we can come back to you after the first of the year. We'll start talking with the adjacent prop, or the affected property owners really as soon as we can. So thank you.
All right. Next up is a discussion about the town sign regulations.
As you know, we talked at the July meeting about potentially amending the town's ordinances regarding campaign signs, and Chairman King referenced that somewhat during his comments as well. That's scheduled for discussion by the Planning Board tomorrow night. My hope is that they will provide a favorable recommendation and that at your September 11th meeting, you all will consider adopting the new campaign sign regulations. They are intended to essentially be identical to the DOT regulations and state law for Highway 24, 58 and Taylor Notion Road. As part of that exercise, Commissioner Martin expressed to me an interest in taking a look at all of the town's sign regulations. And so I wanted to just kind of briefly share with you what those regulations are and see if there are any things, any elements or regulations in particular you'd like us to take a look at as we go forward. Similar to the, the town center zoning district, I would expect that I would take your feedback, draft something at the staff level, present it to the Planning Board for discussion, and ultimately bring it back to you for your consideration, maybe later this year, maybe after the first of the year, depending on how things go. Generally speaking, I think the, the community looks pretty nice. I think the sign regulations have worked reasonably well, and it's all obviously in the eye of the beholder. From my perspective, I think the towns generally look attractive and uniform and consistent with one another, maybe a couple of oddball situations here and there. But generally, I think the town signs, sign regulations have done a pretty good job. Again, that's all in the eye of the beholder, and ultimately, it's up to the elected officials to make those judgments. What I will say to you is, if you look at our ordinance, it is 15 pages long. It is extremely confusing, and, and that's coming from your town manager and your town staff. And so I want to make sure that every regulation that we are enforcing, that it can be easily understood by the general public, by the business owner, and especially by your town manager and your town staff. So if nothing else, I do hope to undertake an effort to simplify this, hopefully significantly, probably collapse some of the regulations together. There's, I think, some unnecessary duplication in here. I think there's a couple of situations where it's not clear, there's a little bit of a conflict in there, and there's certainly some areas where they could be clarified. So at a bare minimum, I would expect to work on that going forward. But if there are other things that you are concerned about, please share those with me, and we will fold them into the process and try to address those. I think probably, you know, there's a whole summary in here of all the regulations, and I won't go through each of those, but generally speaking, in our commercial zones, the size, the total area of signs that you have depends on how much frontage you have. So it's a formula based on three, three square feet for every wall, canopy awning marquee, and freestanding sign for every lineal foot of building wall. So you've got to go through this calculation, you've got to figure out how much frontage they have, you've got to work with the applicant, decide how much they want to invest in wall signs or freestanding signs and so forth. And so it's an exercise. I think it's worked reasonably well. That's a fairly common approach in a lot of towns. That's probably the key regulation that we have here. Generally speaking, I think it's worked pretty well from what I can see in the community. But for example, on the freestanding signs, we don't have anything that limits the height of those freestanding signs, and that's a pretty common provision. But the good news is, is most of our signs are at, I think, a really good, attractive height, you know, tall enough so people can see them, but not sticking out like a sore thumb, which some communities get concerned about. So I will stop there. If you have questions about any of these, please ask them. And if there are specific things you'd like to take, like us to take a look at, I'll be happy to do that going forward.
Frank, my issue with asking you about the signs was simple. I just felt like just sending the campaign sign issue to the Planning Board, if we're going to do it for campaign signs, we should have done it for all signs. I, I just think singling out campaign signs this, this close to an election just, just didn't sit well with me. So I just think the whole sign ordinances should be looked at by the Planning Board, not just single out campaign signs. That was my whole issue with it, start with.
Understood. And that, and this is really my effort to fulfill that request, hopefully. You know, the campaign signs obviously have a time element to it with the election starting soon and, and the way the state law works. Hopefully, my hope is that we'll get something in place before that window starts in September, but point well taken, understood.
Yeah, I, you know, read through this, you know, because it's in the brief, and, you know, I didn't realize the chapter 16 was so confusing. I mean, maybe that's why it's worked well, because no one understands it and they're afraid to put up a sign. I don't know. But I do think it's worth, you know, going through and, and just trying to clean up some of this. I mean, you know, I think you have a pretty good idea of, you know, probably what is typical and not typical. And I feel like the ordinance tries to categorize the signs in multiple ways, multiple different ways, and then puts restrictions on them in those different categories. And I just, I feel like it could be simplified. So, you know, yeah, political signs and town signage in general, I, you know, I think it's probably good to look at all of it and have no problem with that, and I think it could use probably a cleanup. town signage in general, I, you know, I think it's probably good to look at all of it and have no problem with that. And I think it could use probably a cleanup.
You can't say what we need to say about signs in two or three pages. We are just being all.
Amen. My goal is to, um, greatly reduce it, um, and take the U D O from about an inch and a half thick document, ideally down to about a quarter inch or a half inch or something in those lines, along those lines, including the signs.
I think you've got a planning board chairman that, that would be good at these signs.
Yeah. And clearly that's the expectation is to work with the planning board, um, get public input as well. Don't want to penalize anybody, you know, for example, I think some of the signs, that some of the freestanding signs that we have out on Highway 24, they might actually be non-conforming and I'd like to find a way to just bring them into conforming status and not have to deal with that issue. Because I think generally the appearance looks pretty good, for example, and just trying to head off some of those issues as well.
Thanks, Frank.
All right. We'll, we'll move forward with that then in the next few months as well. And I appreciate the feedback.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Why don't you just keep going and give us the town manager's report?
Okay. Lots of, lots of things in here. Um, I'll just hit on a couple of the, maybe the more significant ones that would be helpful to at least get a nod of the head from you. Back in 2018, uh, the board gave direction to the staff to, uh, implement action minutes. If you look at our minutes of our board of commissioners meetings and our planning board meetings, they're often very lengthy and verbatim. Um, and that can be helpful at times. That also does take a lot of work to put those together. Um, we are recording all of these meetings, um, on video and we are putting all of these on our new website, which hopefully is going to go live here in the next month or so. So the board already took action and directed us to go to action minutes. I'm not sure what happened over the course of the last five years that we migrated back to the verbatim. But my intent is to move to the action minutes and rely on the video. So that if people have a question about what someone said or thought, they can simply look at the video, uh, going forward. The action minutes would simply record, you know, who was present, um, when we got started. If there was any public comment, we would briefly summarize that. I E. Mrs. Smith indicated she likes the town center concept, for example. Um, and then it would just include a record of the decision that the board made. And so one of the reasons that you'll notice every formal decision that you all consider, I put it in ordinance or resolution form because I want there to be a clear record of what you all are deciding. And so that would be part of the minutes. Probably some of the write-ups would be inserted in there as well. But if you're comfortable with that, I'm planning to implement that previous direction from the board in July of 2018. And just wanted to give you a chance to tell me not to do that if you don't want me to do that. So.
Is the video evidence suffices an archive just like the word for notes do, Brett?
Oh yeah. For minutes, it just needs to be a general summary. It, taking verbatim is not required.
Uh, hearing no objection, I will proceed in that manner with both the planning board, uh, and the board of commissioners minutes. We, uh, we have removed the fence at clubhouse, clubhouse drive, uh, based on the board's decision at your July meeting. We've also installed stop signs. So it's a three-way stop at that location. Um, and our public works, uh, guys did a great job patching the road where the, uh, fence used to be located. Looks really good out there. So I think they did a good job. Um, there was discussion at the July meeting about possibly going ahead and formally closing. Roughly a 35-foot-long segment of that road closer to Sutton Drive. Uh, we'll tell you, there's a disagreement, uh, between myself and the golf course over exactly where the private street and the public street is. Best I can determine from looking at our town records is there's only about a 35-foot segment there from Sutton Drive, uh, back toward the golf course. And so if the board would like us to go forward and close that 35-foot section of street, we can absolutely do that. You have to go through a process where, uh, we've got to pass, you all would have to pass a resolution of intent. Uh, we would have to advertise, notify property owners. We've got to run ads for four consecutive weeks. Realistically, if we do this, we'll get started in September and the action would be probably finalized in November, um, just because of the way the statute reads and the way the deadlines and newspaper ads and all that stuff work. Um, and if we do that, um, essentially you'd have a land area that's 35-foot long by 60 feet wide. And half of that width would go to the property owner to the northeast and that's a private individual who lives on Sutton Drive. So he would get an area that's roughly 35 by 30, and then the golf course would get an area that's 35 by 30. And what that's going to do practically speaking is that would essentially put the property line right in the middle of the existing road or driveway, whatever you want to call it, that leads to the golf course. And so the golf course would either need to relocate the driveway just slightly, a little bit to the southwest in that area, uh, or they'd have to make some other arrangement with that private property owner to effect a swap. All that to say that, um, it's an awful lot of work and some complicating issues there that I'm not sure that it's worth pursuing that at this time. And I wanted to share that with the board so that you understood the process and how that would work. So, um, when we talked about it at the July meeting, there was some discussion about going forward with that. Um, so that's the process. We have to do a resolution of intent at one meeting, advertise for four successive weeks in the newspaper, uh, schedule a public hearing, notify the adjacent property owners. Then you could take formal action. I think that would be the November, uh, board meeting. And then we've got to work through the issue with the road closure and who gets what land. And I think the golf course would oppose this, quite frankly, that the idea of formally closing or abandoning the street in that area. So, uh, with that, if there's any reaction to that, I'm happy to entertain that. So.
I don't think it's anything worth pursuing myself.
I think, you know, if the town, you know, if we try this and it doesn't work or doesn't get the desired effect, and the town certainly has the right to put the fence back up in the future, uh, if the board determines that. So that much is clear. It'd be in that 35-foot segment, probably the same location we had it in before. So.
Okay. I'm just going to take the wait and see approach, see what the citizens bring up. Like I said in the last meeting. Hearing some scuttlebutt, just be prepared for some, maybe some people wanting to put the fence back up. So.
Understood. And I think the board clearly has the right to do that if it so chooses.
I'm okay with fence being taken down. Uh, I was an advocate for abandoning that 35-foot. It serves no purpose for the town. And I still will be an advocate for that. Uh, but it appears there's no appetite on the board for it at this time. So, well, I'll just table that.
Can you put something together to just explain that graphically, what that would actually do to the property? Cause I, I still, I, I would just like to see that to make sure that I'm clear in what I understand that you just said.
Yeah, absolutely. I can put together a graphic to show you that.
Cause I'll be honest with you, I don't know where the property ends out there. I don't know where it begins. And yeah.
I met the homeowner out there, Nick, that lives on the corner and he shares that confusion about what, what do I get out of this and kind of move my fence and all that. So there's, there's a lot of questions with that, that I think the homeowner and the golf course, because they'd have to work together, uh, make sure all that was, give it out in each other's favor.
I, I will put together a graphic and I will send that to all of you under separate cover, um, seeing, take a look at it.
But I think, you know, to Commissioner Martin's point, I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm really not for or against the idea. Either way, right now, I just don't know what it looks like. But it, to me initially, it does sound like a lot of work with very little benefit. But if there are people that, you know, adjacent property owners, the golf course, if they want this, then, then maybe that is something worth, uh, worth talking about. I just want to see it, you know, what it would be.
Y'all something tomorrow. That will show.
Does that 35-foot include the right of way?
So it's, it's basically you have, if you envision it this way, if you were coming up clubhouse drive from Star Hill, uh, drive and you got to the turn to go left on Sutton Drive, um, there's an area that's about 35-foot long from where that intersection ends and the fence was where it was just removed. So that 35-foot area is street right of way. It's 60-foot wide. So that's the area you'd be abandoning or closing. And the law says that half of that property goes to the adjacent property owners on either side of that. And it just so happens that it puts the line right in the middle of the existing asphalt. And best case scenario, the golf course would have to relocate the driveway slightly around that line.
There's already one there. They've been going around it for years.
A sand path through there. So that's the issue, but I will absolutely have something graphic, uh, for you. So, um, the other thing is, is that, um, on the consent agenda tonight, you all approved the installation of a bulkhead at the Manatee Street Park and I appreciate that. We'll get that going here in the next month or two. We have funding in the current year budget to build a bulkhead at a second, another, um, town waterfront park. Staff has suggested that perhaps Bonita Street or Easy Street would be a good location for the next one. Um, and I just wanted to share that with you. If you have any preference on those, which one you think is better, or if another street location is a better one. You know, we want to gradually improve those waterfront parks and protect them. And so those are the two we're thinking about.
Easy Street's been brought up since I've been sitting on this board. I think we've essentially lost most, most, uh, most of that waterfront down there. If we don't do something soon, there's going to be no park at all, period. And I, I don't know how much is left, probably a matter of feet. I would think Easy Street probably took priority over anything, but it, for some reason it was never brought up. It's not a very used park, but it goes back to what we, maintaining our waterfront properties. I think that's the one that's in the most dire straits right now. Losing it permanently.
Yeah. And, and there may be some opportunity to reclaim some of what we've lost, probably not what was there initially, but some little bit of it too, if we do that. So, any other thoughts? I mean, what I expect to do is, is basically take whatever feedback tonight, solicit bids for the construction of that bulkhead. And then I'll bring back the contract to you at a future meeting. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want this to be based off of utilization. I want it to be based off of preserving the waterfront property. So, you know, if one needs it more than the other, even if it's underused, that's no big deal. I think we need to protect that, that property.
Fair enough. Any other thoughts?
Yes, that's on a precarious little point there in the water. It's, 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 it's taken a beating over the years. It's, it's
We'll focus our efforts on Easy Street. And like I said, eventually I'll bring something back to the board for consideration. So, um, a couple of other things, uh, just real quick, um, uh, the drainage improvements at Sutton Drive and the golf course are underway. I'd say they're probably about 75% complete right now. The new emergency swale across the golf course is in place and I think looks really good. I think it should effectively resolve the concerns we had out there before. Uh, we've got a new ditch in place. We're working with West Carteret Water Corporation to relocate a water line out on Sutton Drive itself, so we can replace that pipe under the street. And we'll probably do that within the next couple of weeks. We also have a new ditch going in, uh, at the end of Sutton Place, uh, with a new home being built there. So those are the two elements that are left. I think, um, God forbid, if we had a crazy rainfall event tomorrow or hurricane, uh, we're already going to be in a much better position than we were heading into this. So, um, pleased to see that happening. Um, the contractors got started at Arden Oaks as well. They, uh, they've basically indicated that's a two to three week job. So I expect them to finish up, um, here in the next couple of weeks or so, um, before our grant deadline of August 31st. Um, they've just gotten started in some of the existing stormwater areas, uh, in Arden Oaks. So glad to see that going forward. All the paving is complete. Um, I think Thomas Simpson Construction did a quality job for us. Uh, they just finished Neptune Drive, uh, on Friday. The paving looks really good. We've, um, adjusted the crown of the road and public works are still planning to go out there and make some stormwater adjustments, uh, in that area to address some of the chronic nuisance flooding we've had in that area. So real pleased with that. Um, some really positive conversations about the school resource officer position that we talked about, um, you know, essentially a commitment from the sheriff and from the county manager to continue working to make that happen. Um, just because of staffing issues and recruiting, it may very well be next school year, uh, August of 2024, but I think there's a path forward for that. I came away pretty encouraged, uh, from the conversations. Lots of other things, uh, in here. Um, last, uh, but not least, um, really pleased, uh, police, our new police chief, Brian Silva, uh, begins work next Monday. And, um, really excited to have him come on board with the town. He's already hard at work. I had to tell him to slow down a little bit on his own time. And so he's really excited to be here in Cape Carteret. Um, certainly want him to introduce, want to introduce him to the board and the public. We're just going to schedule a reception at five o'clock on September the 11th before the September board meeting. If anybody wants to come by and, and meet Brian. In addition to just stopping by and seeing him during the course of normal business, we're, uh, we're probably, I'd say about 60% done with the modifications to the town hall building. Um, pleased with how that's going so far. I'm thinking we'll have week or so, um, and then eventually we'll move the police department over here. I may move Chief Silva over first since he's brand new, but, um, we'll get everybody moved over shortly thereafter. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about anything else that's in here, uh, or anything else that's on your mind. Thanks.
What's on your mind? I got them all.
Well, I agree with Cameron that all that vacating is a lot of much ado about nothing. And really the reason the road was brought up recently, uh, opening it up was because of the water that accumulates on Star Hill Drive when there's a hurricane. And then the nurses or any medical people can't get out of fire trucks that nothing can hear in. And now it's open and it sounds like it's going to be vacated again. And I've been thinking about it and a solution would be a gate so that it could be opened in an emergency.
Well, that to me would be up to the Star Hill. That's their property. If they want to put a gate up, that's great. If not, then I don't see where that's our business.
She hasn't been able to get out when there's a hurricane. Well, hurricanes don't come very often, thank goodness. But, uh, it's, you know, it's a concern. I mean, it's a safety issue and it would allow police cars to come through. Uh, but I think fire trucks and ambulances would come. I'm just probably normal, you know, not being open all the time. Uh, but when it's, when there's anything going on, everything that comes through Hannah Notion and Star Hill Drive, uh, that was an emergency. If there was no water on, uh, creek there, uh, Star Hill Drive. I'm, I'm just a little concerned that if it's, it's not going to solve the problem of.
No, you're, you're going to have problems like that, but you know, the town's already made a decision. And like I say, if the Star Hill decides they want to put a gate up and up, that's up to them. It's their problem. Any other questions for Frank?
I'd just like to mention that just not forget golf and dolphin is a private street also and, yep, Enterprise Drive. So. You heard anything from the county board on whether you have a sense of whether they're going to allow the ABC store to adjust their product market?
I have not heard anything official. Um, the, I think the common perception that I'm hearing, and even from some of the other towns too, is that that nobody has a real significant objection to it at this point. So I think the prognosis is probably pretty favorable, but it's ultimately up to the county commissioners. They may be meeting tonight as far as I know to talk about it. Um, I, I think, um, certainly anytime there's a loss in town revenues, it's a concern for us and should be. Um, I think everything that I've, um, learned about it to this point, I think it'll be a manageable figure for us. And that seems to be the position I'm hearing from my colleagues in the other towns. Worst case, I think it's probably somewhere on the magnitude of $16,000 in terms of actual dollars. And from a budget perspective, it's probably more like 10,000-ish, give or take. Um, again, I don't like that, but it's probably manageable. And, you know, you've got to kind of pick and choose which things you want to express concern about. But, um, they're trying to just put themselves in a better financial position for the future. So. There's also, there's some talk and perhaps this will be one of the things, they've talked about phasing it in over the course of two years. And so that was an idea that the county manager shared with me that would make that impact even less. So maybe it could be as little as $5,000 in terms of a budget hit for us. Eight, $9,000 in terms of the actual dollar. So with that said, I don't know where they stand on the. So with that said, I don't know where they stand on the discussion.
Any other questions for Frank? Comments? Nothing? We'll start with Steve on the end there for Commissioner's comments.
Yeah, I just want to thank the public for being patient with us on this stormwater issues that we're dealing with. We were lucky to get that $800,000 or $900,000 from the American Rescue Plan, which we diverted to a stormwater fund. Had it not been for that windfall, we would never have been able to, in my mind, to afford it to do any of this. We've been very fortunate. It's a long drawn-out process. Thank Frank for overseeing and actually saving a ton of money on those three projects that we've issued a contract with construction companies. We've got more to go. I'm not sure what the balance is going to be after this bog sound, but we'll still have some money to spend on addressing some of the other issues. I know there's several other on the list, so thank the public for being patient. Government moves slow, we're no exception. But thanks again.
I just echo what Steve said. This town has come a long ways in the last four years, just one more. We have accomplished a lot, and I'm just thankful that we're working with the board that saw the priorities of the town and move forward with that aspect of stormwater. Just get our streets back where they need to be, we will be on somewhere. Anyway, that's all I have.
I don't have anything to report. I just want to thank Frank and all the town staff for what they're doing on a daily basis. I can't drive from my neighborhood to downtown Cape Carteret without passing Public Works guys out somewhere working. They're always out there busy doing it. Police Department, I couldn't be more proud of the job they're doing. And Frank, you and the town staff, I mean, this town is definitely headed in the right direction. I just appreciate what all of you are doing.
Nothing for me.
Well, I thank everybody for being here as well. I can't say enough about our staff. Matter of fact, I had a text while we're sitting here from a homeowner who was applauding you guys for going out there and getting the tree limbs down, smacking his boat, going down a roadway. Yes, the little things. I mean, we're very fortunate, very blessed to be in this town. The problems we have are solvable, and like Steve said, the wheels of a town sometimes turn excruciatingly slow, but they do turn. And that's the thing, to be a small town, we're Mayberry with a large intersection when you think about it, you know, with our population. So we've got a lot going on for us, and there's a lot of towns that would love to be in our position right now, just very close to us. I can't say enough about that, Frank and the staff, Public Works, especially the staff uptown, y'all have to handle all the phone calls, everything like that. Our new employees, welcome again. And thank you all for being here, because this is your town, so I love seeing people come to these meetings. And with that, I need to entertain a motion to go into a closed session pursuant for fine attorney privilege and a personnel issue.
I'll make that motion.
All right, see you.
All right.
Once again, thank you all for coming here. I do appreciate it.